Good morning. The August 3rd, 2021 meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will come to order, and we are pleased to have with us this morning Pastor Reginald Littman of New Mountain Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation. And after the invocation, please remain standing for our pledge to the flag.
Madam Chair, and to all of the distinguished commissioners, we're reminded of the words of the Psalmist in Psalm 46 verse 1 where he declared, "God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in the time of trouble; let us pray. O God, I help in ages past, I hope for years to come, our shelter in life's stormy blast, and our eternal home." It is again that we come, first of all acknowledging you as God, as Creator of all, as sustainer of life, as giver of life.
And Father, today we ask for your blessings upon this meeting, upon all of those who have assembled in this place. Bless our county, bless our national government, our state government. And Father, we ask that you would keep us in this difficult time of Delta and variance. We know that you are still God, you are still sovereign, you're still great, you're still good. Be with us in this meeting, lead us and guide us, teach us to know you and to follow your ways and principles for the betterment and enhancement of the citizens of this county. And it's in the blessed name of my Redeemer Jesus the Christ I do pray, amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much Pastor Littman. We appreciate you coming in this morning blessing this amazing county, and we appreciate all the things that you do to provide this love and care to all the citizens and residents of Douglas County. And thank you, thank you, we are honored this morning to have you. Board of Commissioners, before we start, I want to call Row and verify our presence. I see you, but of course we've done this, and I think it's a good thing to do. I'll start off with District 1 Commissioner Henry Mitchell III.
Present.
District 2 and Vice Chairman Commissioner Kelly Robinson.
Present.
District 3, Torene O'Carthon.
Present.
District 4, Ann Jones Geider.
Present.
Ramona Jackson Jones, Chairman, present. Board of Commissioners, we have a quorum. All right, we're going to start. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comment this morning?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much Clerk. Board of Commissioners, we're just going to move right on into our minutes. Our minutes, Board of Commissioners, you have the approval of the minutes, the commission meeting minutes of July 20th, 2021, work session minutes of July 19th, 2021, and the executive session minutes of July 19th, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections that need to be made, Board of Commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to the meeting minutes. We talked about the, what I want to call the, during the legal organ, ordinance change, word that I misspoke was, I said financial versus annual, which was my intent, and I'd like to make an amendment to that single word if the board so pleases.
Okay. All right. Any other corrections? I won't take a motion on that. I'm assuming the board, are we okay with that, just that one correction? Are we okay? Okay. So, again, are there, with those added corrections that the Vice Chairman just inserted, do we, Board of Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions that need to be made or corrections?
No ma'am.
Okay. With that being said, the minutes stand approved. Board of Commissioners, we have a proclamation this morning, and that proclamation will be read by our own Commissioner of District 3, Torene O'Carthon. And this proclamation, which is tab number four, is proclaiming September 20th through September 24th, 2021, as Minority Business Opportunity Week in Douglas County. Commissioner Carthon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the Minority Business Opportunity Week, and the proclamation stands this way. Whereas for 46 years, the Georgia Minorities Supplier Development Council, better known as GMSDC, Georgia's leading small business development and supplier diversity organization, has certified minority business enterprise firms, developed their capability, capacity, and competency, and facilitated partnerships with corporations and governments in need of their goods and services. And whereas, the GMSDC serves more than 400 corporations that are headquartered in Georgia or have a significant presence here, as well as more than 800 certified minority business enterprises, firms, and whereas the GMSDC has helped minority business enterprise firms create thousands of jobs, generate billions of dollars in revenues, and help build sustainable enterprises. And whereas, the GMSDC continues to support Georgia's minority business enterprises through its various signature events and educational programs designed to provide opportunities for growth, success, and long-term sustainability. And whereas, on September 20th through the 24th, 2021, the GMSDC will host its quarterly Business Opportunity Exchange to stimulate opportunities and explore ways for minority businesses to do business with corporate and governmental supply chains. Now therefore, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 20th through the 24th, 2021, as the Minority Business Opportunity Week in Douglas County to honor the achievements of minority businesses and their importance to our community and economy. So proclaim this third day of August, 2021.
Thank you so much Commissioner Carthon. Certainly, the minority businesses in Douglas County and all across the globe have made a significant impact in just moving the needle forward in terms of increasing the industry, the economic development, and just the livelihood day-to-day. And we cannot thank our minority businesses enough, and I urge you, when you're out and about, please thank minority businesses because they have and they are making a difference in our community. Board of Commissioners, you have heard the proclamation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Board of Commissioners?
Yes ma'am.
Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Carthon, Commissioner of the 3rd District for bringing that forward. I was surprised, in a positive way, that you brought that forward, to continue to highlight here in our county the need to be inclusive, to diversify. Procurement is very, very important to a government, but it's not so much that we have to, whether we do it internally or we outsource it, it's always follow the money. Right? So the question is, it's important that you promote, you give people access, you give them opportunities to gain wealth, to sustain their families. But one of the things that I've noticed over time being here in this seat is that sometimes that's hidden from the average citizen, right? Or it's caught in what I call cliques and circles and elitism and just not born here. And people are locked out, and while we sit here and we allow it and we enable it, and it's tolerated in that, well, we're smiling in everyone's face, but yet they're still not getting access. And it's unequal. And I think these type of programs have to be highlighted. You have to, because left on its own, less unchecked, unbalanced, the disparity will continue to grow, to keep expanding. And so this, I mean, Commissioner Carthon, thank you for bringing this, it reminds us of, like even with our own SPOSS, this administration sort of purpose say, okay, look, we need to expand this, we need to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to eat, to everybody has an opportunity to get a plate. And it has to be intentional. These are not just some symbolic proclamations that was coming forth, so I'm emphasizing that, like, no, that thing was real, it has teeth. Right? I mean, the reason that we promote and we're doing education and business education, because again, we want to learn about 501(c)(6)'s, learn about 501(c)(3)'s, learn about how to get in the game, and not just being workers. There's other ways to sustain your family. Right? And sometimes government, it gets conveying of who they want to let in. The question sometimes is, who do you keep in? And so I love these type of programs that, like, look, we're awake, every year the county has, it says, Madam Chair's administration, how to do business in Douglas, for Douglas, through Douglas. That was intentional, and while this is a national effort, I wanted to bring back home at the local level, no, we're doing it actively. And so, Madam Chair, I just wanted to emphasize, I thank you guys for joining Madam Carthon in bringing this forward and making it real, and making them understand that we are committed to making sure that everybody has an opportunity. With that, I yield the floor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Commissioner Carthon, you have the floor.
Thank you. So this was brought to my attention by our Economic Development Director, Chris Pumphrey, and we have a representative from the Georgia Minority Supplier Corporation here today. So, Mr. Bolton, if you will, come up. Thank you so much for what you do. I am a minority business. When I came to Douglas County, it was hard for me to get business here, but eventually I did. I had to venture out, but it was because of mentors and people like yourself who went into the space and who said, hey, minority businesses need an opportunity, right? So you guys created the relationships that allow people like me to actually sustain our families. So for that, I am eternally grateful. It is my pleasure to do this proclamation. Here in Douglas County, my first year as a Commissioner, I helped to institute the DBE policy that we now put forth, and it's because of our SPOSS and other things within this county, minority businesses are able to compete in Douglas County. And before I got here, all I heard was, we can't do business in Douglas County, they don't want us there. That has changed. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for bringing this to my attention.
That's my favorite kind of practice, y'all.
Yes, that's our favorite kind of proclamation.
Sorry.
So, any words from you?
Yes ma'am, I want to thank you, Commissioner Carthon, for being willing to help with this. And I've known Commissioner Vice Chair Robinson longer than he and I would want to admit, but it's an honor for me to be before you today. And you know, Georgia is a state that has a 30-something percent black population and almost half minority, and the minority participation on state contracts is in the single digits all the time. So there's lots of opportunity in terms of just doing business with the communities that make up the state that we live in, and that pay the taxes and create the jobs and so on. And so last year, the GMSDC reached out to the state of Georgia, started with the state, and we now have all the metro counties and major cities proclaiming Minority Business Opportunity Week, so that we can bring focus to the fact that there is a huge, Georgia's one of the leading states in the nation in terms of the numbers and the kinds and the quality of minority businesses, and they're still underutilized. So that's the goal, is to just bring them up to a level of equity that's commensurate with their population representation. But thank you all for your service, by the way. I always like to recognize, I work in politics sometimes, and it's an honor to have people like you who are willing to serve when the rest of us won't, because some of us have been asked to serve, and we're like, uh-uh. 1979 might come out, I'm not doing it. I just want to welcome you back, and I want to thank you all for your servant leadership and for your willingness to represent the people of Douglas.
Thank you so much. With that, Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthon. And I want to thank our guest. And Mr. Molton, thank you so much for being here. We're honored to have you in our presence as well. All right, any other questions from the board? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Board of Commissioners, please prepare to cast your votes.
Lisa.
Yeah.
Question carries, five oh.
Okay, we have a 5-0 unanimous vote, Board of Commissioners, and the motion carries, and I will close by saying, just on this particular topic, Douglas County is open for business for everybody. We're going to move on to new business, tab number five, authorization to accept donations of a reversionary interest in property located at 2571 Kent Drive from the Douglasville Church of Christ Incorporated, and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Question carries, five oh.
Okay, we have a 5-0 unanimous vote, and the motion carries. We're going to move on to tab number seven. Tab number seven is authorization to approve a part-time attorney contract with Don Scotland in the Solicitor's General's Office and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Can I get the Solicitor General just to come up for the general public to, at least, I was wanting to jump in on the first item, but if she can just kind of cover them both, just so the general public can understand kind of what just, what we just actually did, and how wonderful the Solicitor's Office is going to be kind of done, and how it's going to be under some great operations and all that good stuff. So if you would though, yes, just speak on really item six and seven, but kind of what were they, what are these items all about, the part-time legal assistant and the part-time attorney?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good day. I thought we'd have some food up here, but we don't. I will speak on what I have here. I will first deal with the part-time Solicitor General. I will bring her in because, number one, we'll have a, can you hear me?
Put your mic.
I want y'all to see my thing here with Solicitor's Conference on there, but anyway.
Okay.
Anyway. I want to deal first with Don Scotland, and she's our part-time Solicitor General. What she will be doing is helping us with the backlog of cases that we have. As you all know, because of the pandemic, we got behind. We're now having a lot of court, so a lot of cases are being left and just kind of hanging. So what she's going to be doing primarily is handling all of our traffic cases. We have traffic court on Fridays, we have over 100 people here, so she's going to be handling that along with Ms. Hansroth, who is also, is a college student, I'm sorry, a law student in her third year. So she will be technically a legal assistant slash paralegal, but we're able to label her as a quote third-year law student, so she will be able to handle cases under our supervision.
Understood.
So that expands it. And we also have another person who's our paralegal, our part-time paralegal, who's also a part, who's also a law student who's in his third year, so he's quote a third-year law student, so he can handle cases. So it's almost like we're having three additional attorneys to do some catch-up.
Understood.
So that's what they're going to be doing, primarily, number one, handling the traffic cases that are backed up, and also, we have a backlog of cases where people are out of state, we have over 2,000, they're bench warrants, and of course, they cannot.
If we could just keep the noise down in the back, thank you.
Okay, all right. Go right ahead, I'm sorry.
And of course, the sheriff will not go out of state to pick up misdemeanor defendants. So what we're going to do, we're going to reach out to those people to get them to resolve their cases, they can come on by Zoom, resolve their cases, pay their fines. So those are going to be her primary responsibilities, and Ms. Hansroth will be assisting her with that.
Got it, got it. So this will kind of enhance your operation, help you be more efficient, and kind of get some of the case, the backlog caught up and get you guys moving?
Yes, it will.
Got it. And just for clarity, so the public understand, I think this may be for legal, make sure that this is just going to take us to the end of the year. This budget will take us to the end of the year. Next year, we need to kind of budget, and I'm really saying this for my colleagues and Madam Subredan, that we need to budget next year to be prepared for this, because this is ongoing. I mean, we don't think this will be caught up by the end of the year.
Well, I mean, you know, well, it may not be, but I mean, our county has grown exponentially.
Absolutely.
Since we've only had, you know, six ASGs, Assistant Solicitor Generals.
Right.
But we have a lot more cases.
Understood.
And we need to move those cases.
Right. And again, I'm saying that for my colleagues and for Madam Subredan, so she, because we're going to have this budget retreat and all these other great things, and I want to make sure that this make it to the docket. So as my Vice Chairman Robinson would say, put that on my tab, so we can make sure that that's on the tab and we have that conversation, okay? Thank you.
Well, Madam Subredan did come to the office, we met, showed her around, so she has some idea of what we're going through down there, and so did Commissioner Ann Geider came by, and I opened the drawers and showed her all our cases, what we have, the backup cases, so, you know, she has some idea of what we have.
Good. Well, I just want to say thank you and job well done, and we've had many conversations on how to get there, and I'm glad you've figured out a way to kind of get all of us on the same page to get you there. So, thank you again, and I appreciate it, and I yield back.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much Solicitor General and Commissioner Carthon. Solicitor, if you could come back to the podium, please.
Yes, hang on.
I just love how your mask matches your outfit.
That's a coincidence.
I just want to say thank you for speaking with me regarding this and then doing this on a contractual basis. I think everybody in this courthouse knows where I stand on contracts and bringing them forth, right? And so I just want to say thank you for listening to me and incorporating that, seeing as that we're going through, you know, our budget crunch, and we want to make sure that we make our numbers. But I believe you were telling me that there is a way that bringing these to part-time zone will actually increase the revenue in your department. Can you just speak to the constituents a little bit about that?
Right, and that has to do with handling these cases where people have, are on bench warrant status, didn't come to court, so the cases are sitting there, we call them dead docket cases. And what happens is, if we happen to find them at some point, they're arrested and the case is resolved. But this is a way for us to reach out to these people, to say, hey, you've got this bench warrant, you can resolve this, we're making this offer to you. If you accept it, you can come on Zoom, or if it's, we can make it payable, you can agree to pay it. And most times, people want to do that because, number one, they can get their license back, they don't have to run and hide when they see the police coming, they can get better jobs. So once we offer them that, what we found is, most people take advantage of it, and they'll go ahead, plea out, or pay, if it's payable, pay the fine, and that way, that is revenue coming into the county that we normally would not have.
Exactly. So thank you so much for doing that and thinking outside the box so that we can, one, clear up people's lives, so they can get back to their daily lives, but also, two, clear out your docket. With that, Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthon, and thank you so much, Solicitor. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor, and I didn't ignore you on purpose, I thought you were just getting my attention for Commissioner Carthon. You have the floor.
No, thank you, no. I just, again, we, I appreciate, again, your leadership in that area, taking us to another level, becoming more clear in how you present information to us and working with us, and so that is appreciated. I think to both my colleagues' point, there's still a need to acknowledge our reality. You're behind. The pandemic didn't help. Right? So this is not just normal accommodation. So, to Commissioner Mitchell's point, to dovetail Commissioner Carthon's point, to county administrator, as you come before us with this strategic plan, which I know is the executive side of government, there is a judicial side of government, American Government 101. It's important that there is accommodation, I know that there's, there was a conversation by the Solicitor for saying, but it has to be factored in as we began to prepare for strategic plan over the next three to five years. You cannot sustain this level of population with this staff. You're already behind. You could be as efficient as you want to, but it's about capacity. And so that's a conversation that we need to make sure we have, that there's room to have that dialogue, that not just Madam Solicitor, Madam SG as I call her, but everybody else that's on that, as we call that side of the House, that we must make sure that we factor in them as a Board of Commissioners, we have to consider all of them. Right? Yes, we're legislators, that's the legislative, then you've got the executive, but you also got the judicial branch in theory. Yes, we're all squeezed together, but we have to separate and acknowledge that doubt shall budget for them. Doubt shall. It's not a, well, maybe we can find something for you, no. We're the ones that's discretionary. I think that's important, so I just wanted to lay that down, set expectations next week that says, whatever you come, I'd hate for you to come in there with 100%, we got to knock it down 20% because there was no consideration given to that outer band. And I think that's important, whatever we do, let's just be conscious about it, let's really work together, let's really get this one right. Madam Chair, I thank you. I yield the floor.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. All right, if there's nothing else, thank you so much, Solicitor.
Thank you all.
You got your, you did receive your exercise today, back and forth.
I did.
Thank you again for coming in. Board of Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor, please prepare to cast your votes.
Question carries, five oh.
Thank you so much, Board of Commissioners, we have a 5-0 unanimous vote, and the motion carries. We're going to move right into our consent agenda, Board of Commissioners, all items are subject to final legal review, and yesterday we had an opportunity to discuss these items in our work session, and I'm hoping that you're satisfied with that discussion. If that's, if so, at your pleasure, I would like to call for a motion to approve accordingly as written, the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, board? We have a motion and a second, please prepare to cast your votes. So, to Commissioner Mitchell's point, to dovetail Commissioner Carthen's point, to County Administrator, as you come before us with this strategic plan, which I know is the executive side of government, there is a judicial side of government, American Government 101. It's important that there is accommodation. I know that there was a conversation by the Solicitor per se, but it has to be factored in as we began to prepare for a strategic plan over the next three to five years. You cannot sustain this level of population with this staff. You're already behind. You can be as efficient as you want to, but it's about capacity. And so, that's a conversation that we need to make sure we have, that there's room to have that dialogue, that not just Madam Solicitor, Madam SG, as I call her, but everybody else that's on that, as we call that side of the House, that we must make sure that we factor in them as a Board of Commissioners. We have to consider all of them. Right, yes, we're legislators, that's the legislative, and you've got the executive, but you also got the judicial branch in theory. Yes, we're all squeezed together, but we have to separate and acknowledge that doubt shall budget for them. Doubt shall. It's not a, well, maybe we can find something for you. No. We're the ones that's discretionary. I think that's important, so I just wanted to lay that down. Set expectations next week that says, whatever you come, I'd hate for you to come in there with 100%. We got to knock it down 20% because there was no consideration given to that outer band. And I think that's important, whatever we do. Let's just be conscious about it. Let's really work together. Let's really get this one right. Madam Chair, I thank you. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. All right, if there's nothing else, thank you so much, Solicitor.
Thank you all.
You got you. You did receive your exercise today back and forth.
I did.
Thank you again for coming in. Board of Commissioners, we have a motion and second on the floor. Please prepare to cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much, Board of Commissioners. We have a 5-0 unanimous vote, and the motion carries. We're going to move right into our consent agenda, Board of Commissioners. All items are subject to final legal review. And yesterday, we had an opportunity to discuss these items in our work session, and I'm hoping that you're satisfied with that discussion. If that's, if so, at your pleasure, I would like to call for a motion to approve accordingly as written, the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
Some moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, board? We have a motion and a second. Please prepare to cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We have a 5-0 unanimous vote, Board of Commissioners, and the motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. And certainly before I yield to our Communications Director for announcements, we'd like to just yield the floor to our Commissioners, if anyone have an announcement that they would like to make. Commissioner Carthen, you have the floor.
Thank you. This, starting next month, September 28th, in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which begins October 1st, I am inviting the public and, of course, the employees here, our county family, to come out and have a mammogram screening. We will have the Pink Mammogram Unit right here at the courthouse. It is a convenience for our employees, of course, but it's also convenient for those community members. We know that Breast Cancer Awareness Month begins in October, but breast cancer awareness should really be all year long. Don't neglect your health just because we are in a pandemic. Make sure you get your annual mammogram screenings. For most women, that starts at the age of 40, and it goes up from there. So, we will have the Pink Mammogram Mobile Unit here at the courthouse on Tuesday, September 28th. If you would like to schedule an appointment, please go onto celebratedouglascounty.com and schedule that appointment, or get in contact with our office at 770-920-7266. We want you to be safe. We want you to make sure that you dot your i's and cross your t's because we know that early detection is the key to saving lives when it comes to breast cancer. Thank you, Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen. Any other announcements? Commissioner Mitchell?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. First, let me, I just want to say thank you to those who partake in the back-to-school eighth annual, okay, the eighth annual back-to-school bookbag drive that Fit for the Future, the Men's Club, and UGOT Next Barber Shop on Faribault Road. To Commissioner Carthen, who partaked in that whole makeup. And we gave, I think we gave out roughly about plus 3,000 bookbags and school supplies and haircuts and free food and haircut. I mean, we just, it was a host of participation with those 300-plus volunteers that did an excellent job at making sure that everything went right, the Bounce House and all that good stuff. So, just thank you. And I think our kids here in Douglas County will have a great start of the school year. So, thank you to those that partake in that particular setup. Also, we've got the grand opening of the Senior Citizen Center. And I don't mean to put her on the spot, though, but I just want to acknowledge that Friday, August 6th, and if Dr. Gilchrist would at least come and just, I know, I know, it's, if Dr. Gilchrist would at least just come forth, and I know we got, we're going to be doing this on this Friday, August 6th. And I just wanted to kind of talk about the whole plan of action, what it looks like, and what we can expect, this grand opening for our seniors and all that good stuff. And we love you for all that you do, just want to let you know that first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, as Commissioner Mitchell stated, on August 6th, this Friday, we are super, super excited that the Lithia Springs Senior Center will have its grand opening and ribbon-cutting celebration. We are also excited about our special guest emcee, Mrs. Monica Kaufman Pearson, who will be there. We have vendors who will also represent us. We have the band from the Lithia Springs High School and the honor guard from the Lithia Springs High School. We are looking to just have a wonderful time, and we invite all of our citizens out to join us, especially our older adults. And we just thank you guys so much for your support and everything that you do for the seniors in Douglas County and for senior services. So, this is going to be a very grand, grand event. And thanks to our County Administrator for coming on board and pushing us through and just making this awesome. And so, again, we look forward to seeing you on Friday, August 6th, between the hours of 10:00 to 2:00. During this event, we will have tours of the facility. So, for those of you who have not seen it, Commissioner Carthen, we are just, our doors will swing open, as they say, on welcome hinges. And so, we're inviting the public to definitely come out and join us that day. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you, Dr. Gilchrist. We really appreciate that. So, again, that's this Friday, from 10:00 until 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, is it? 10:00 until 2:00, 10:00 until 2:00. And come out and join the festivities, and it's a mask event. So, make sure you wear your mask, and if you forget it, don't worry. Dr. Gilchrist got you. Okay, good enough. And last but not least, I want to invite everybody to the up-and-coming Coffee and Conversation. That's going to be at Tito's, Tito's Lounge, at Tito's Lounge this Saturday. Now, it's been roughly about a year plus that we, you know, due to the pandemic, we've actually postponed the mini Coffee and Conversations. So, for the next couple of months, to the end of the year at least, we'll be doing Coffee and Conversations. And, you know, I provide the coffee, you provide the conversation. It's, it'll be located at 12353 Veterans Memorial Highway in Douglasville. If you need additional information, you can call 678-914-1537. Again, that's 678-914-1537. But I think this is perfect timing. You come out and just enjoy this festivities that we've kind of got in play for you. We can talk about the upcoming budget and what it looks like, what the county directions, and what my colleagues are talking about with the SPOSS dollars and how this all come to play and how we really can make this happen. So, again, come out. We'll do it from 10:00 till 12:00 noon. It's only two hours on your Saturday. It'll be this Saturday, August 7th. And just come out and just enjoy yourselves. Outside of that, that's all I've got, Madam Chair, and thank you, and I'll yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell, and thank you so much, Dr. Gilchrist. Commissioner Carthen?
One more thing, thank you, Madam Chair. I can't say enough about Solicitor Compton, Judge Bo McLean, and the Fire Department for helping me this past week to give out supplies to our teachers. We were able to donate masked hand sanitizer. We had principals and teachers to meet us at Publix, who is an awesome, awesome community provider here in Douglas County. The teachers and the principals came up to the Publix on Chapel Hill. They had empty buggies in front of them, and by the time we left the store, they had full buggies. And it was absolutely my pleasure to say, let's go shopping, and you do not have a budget. And they just looked at me and stared at me and Christie because they thought we were playing, but we were so serious. They got many supplies and snacks and water bottles for the students to come back into the classrooms. So, I just want to say thank you to the Fire Department, thank you to all the sponsors, and thank you so much to those who helped to make this possible. The schools, the teachers were just ecstatic about the ability to make sure that they had what the students needed coming back. So, I just wanted to say a doubly thank you, thank you, thank you. It's not possible doing it alone. It's possible only when you have a collaboration of people. So, with that, Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
It's hard to come by how I heard all the time, you know. She hits it so well, just the perfect tone. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very quick, and I do want to acknowledge my peers' effort regarding back-to-school. You know, I have limited contribution I can do from a physical perspective, but those two, you know, compared to last year, you guys killed it this year. I mean, y'all are four-five X what we did last year, and you're growing, and you're penetrating, and you're making a difference. And while people don't see it, it's small, like, well, I think your numbers rival some of the counties over in Atlanta based on what I heard on People to People. Well done, you two. Guys, can we give them a hand clap for what they did, please, real quick? And y'all know I speak sincerely, no? It matters. You know, my heart yearns to be able to do that, but I'm like, okay, y'all keep going. Keep going, you're doing right. So, that being said, I'll segue when it talks about collaboration. But you get in where you can fit in, right? You know, you get in where you can fit in and where you can contribute. And so, with that being said, on August 21st, 2021, I'm having my sixth, should be going on sixth, no, fifth annual HOA Boot Camp. And this is a very, very important event because it's something that, once again, came out of the heart of what? Citizens. Right, it's about hearing their cries. And it's nothing like when I go and did my town halls to talk to the citizens and they realized that they had issues within their HOAs. They're just like ours. They're bound by a covenant. And watching them, there's like, I realized that unlike me to get, and all five of us who have education and we're certified, they don't have it, but they have the same type of power we have within their communities. They can apply penalties, right? Leans on people property. You know, we've had citizens recently come and complain about citizens, the HOAs, putting liens on their property and they can't sell it. And how they get, and how they can't get fair elections. And nobody wants to release their financial statements. And so, what we try to do is educate our citizens who are new homeowners or those who really, look, I hire you guys to go do that, work this out, but it's want to make sure that we level set. So, it's a good platform that I've partnered with my colleagues over in Cobb and over in Fulton to be able to, you know, drive this home. There's nine counties that participate in this program annually, and this is the Douglas version of it and stuff. And obviously, out of this came legislation that we've shaped up at the state that we're continuing to push forward to try to regulate this a little bit more because we hear you. Guys, we're neighbors. So, we're going to give you some tools and techniques through a panel discussion. It's going to be led by our very own Wendy Cottle concerning that matter. But also, we've got a special theme, and this year's theme is going to be what I call Community Policing. The citizens asked for it. So, I'm so thankful that Sheriff Pounds has agreed to participate in that panel. He said absolutely when I met with him recently. I'm so delighted that, one more time, Madam Solicitor General, Signya Compton has agreed. Absolutely, I'm in. So, I got the public safety, I got judicial. Madam Sharon Suber Dan, County Administrator. But with all those years of city experience, being a city manager who actually controlled public enforcement, she's going to be there. In addition, I've got Oryd Curry, who's also going to be on the panel. He is the president and my very first HOA of the Year winner. He is going to be there representing Brookmont Community. And I've got an at-large citizen, a woman by the name of Melanie LaGroom. She is both a, she used to be what I want to call a public safety officer. She was a police officer and turned attorney. And they ever hear her heart, talk about like, okay, I've been on the inside. And she advocates for African-American males and defendants, and like, she says, oh, no, this community policing is something you have to consider, but it's not just about urban. It applies everywhere. And so, she's going to help moderate that. So, I'm looking forward to this. It's going to be a very good event. Again, every year, I go to another level. This will be a hybrid model. It will be in-person. The goal is to have it at the new community center, but we're counting on that. We've always got our backup just in case something happens. We never know what's going on right now, but it will be a hybrid model. It will be from 8:00 in the morning to 12:00. There will be refreshments as we always do there. And again, we look forward to all of you coming out. There is on our website, celebratedouglascounty.com, External Affairs, my own. There's a link in which you can register. We will have limited seating, obviously because of the pandemic and because of the space. But because it's a hybrid, we know that we welcome everybody to participate in it and register accordingly. So, with that being, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay.
I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Commissioner Guyter, you have anything to add?
Thank you, ma'am. Throughout the pandemic, I've utilized my newsletter to communicate with the public. And they can communicate to me at my home computer. So, they can send me all their messages, and they do that, I assure you. But I will be planning, now that school is back and people are off of vacation, I will be planning a town hall, hopefully, out at Clinton Farm in the little mini arena out there, Ampli Theater. But anyway, I will be announcing that soon. I did, in my last newsletter, announce that we are having our budget retreat the 12th and the 13th out at the new senior center next week. So, and the public is invited. So, anyway, with that, I'll just turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Guyter. Just want to correct you, it's not the budget retreat, mid-year retreat.
Mid-year, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. All right, any other from the board? Okay, our Communications Director, you have the floor to pick up what's, with the remaining of the announcements.
Masking the mics.
Just like it.
Good morning, Chairman Jones, Board of Commissioners, Madam County Administrator, Suber Dan, staff, and citizens watching live on DCTV-23. Remaining announcements, just to mention, September Saturday's Festival Celebration, the 19th Annual Event, is returning at the Douglas County Courthouse on Saturday, September 18th and September 25th. Heroes Day and Touch a Truck Experience is happening on the 18th, and Family Day and Fun and Games Festival is happening on the 25th. Lots of fun expected from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., food vendors, music, marching bands, and so much more. Wonderful opportunity to have the public come out and enjoy. Cobb and Douglas Public Health will be offering free COVID-19 vaccines at Derelict Park, which is located at 2105 Mack Road in Douglasville. The first dose was given on the 31st of July, but the second dose, as a reminder to those who took the first dose, is happening on August 21st. That's August 21st, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Derelict Park's Recreation Center. The Pfizer vaccine is being administered to individuals 12 years of age and older. For anyone that wants to get further information on COVID-19, they're invited to call the COVID-19 Call Center at 1-833-974-3366. That's 1-833-974-3366. The Douglas County Small Business Grant Program is still accepting applications from the Douglas County Small Businesses for $2,500 grants. To apply, please visit elizabethbaptist.org. Or for more information, you're invited to visit celebratedouglascounty.com. CelebrateDouglasCounty.com. I yield back to you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much, Communications Director. Certainly, in closing temporarily, we will be taking a recess. So, I don't want to mistake the word by saying, in closing, but I would like to just end by saying, we cannot take this virus lightly. Douglas County is in high zone right now. And what does that mean? That means that we are, we should highly consider wearing masks in public places, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, you should wear masks. That is just per the recommendations of Cobb Public Health, Public Director Janet Memark. So, just wanted to share that information with our citizens. Right now, we are in high status here in Douglas County. And our only pathway to victory right now in terms of this virus is a vaccine. So, we are encouraging Douglas County to please take action and consider taking the vaccine. Our numbers are increasing and looking better day by day, but just would like to just make sure that you understand the purpose and the, what the results will render with this vaccine. Board of Commissioners, if there's nothing else to come before us at this moment, we will certainly adjourn right now for recess, and we will return tonight at 6:00 p.m. for our joint Douglas, I mean, Board of Commissioners and Planning and Zoning Meetings. So, right now, this meeting is in recess. Thank you.